September 27, 2018, City of Palatka Commission Meeting. We will now have our emprication. Would everyone please stand for our emprication and our pledge at this time? Father, first and foremost, we thank you for this opportunity to be here. Father, we thank you for these commissioners and for these people that love their community. We thank you, Father, for each and every one that is sitting in the audience. Many people, Father, represent loving their community. They have needs and they have hurts and they have questions and they want to see our city get better. Father, too many times, it is so easy to get overwhelmed with talking about roads and buildings and equipments and policies and this and that. Help us to pause. Urgently call upon you for the wisdom to do the task that is set before us, each and every one, to follow the example that you have given us in Scripture, Father, to lead people to rule, but to rule with compassion, to rule with empathy, to rule with love. So, Father, may we turn the proceedings of this meeting over to you, knowing that we are in your presence, knowing, Father, that you have ordained this government. And may everything that is done and said be pleasing to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
The citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and everlasting.
Thank you, Pastor Phillips. Moving on, has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from our September 13th meeting as well as our August 30th workshop?
Motion approved.
It's motion on the floor in a second. All in favor, say aye. Close motion carries unanimously. Let the record reflect that all commissioners are here and present and accounted for, and we do have a court. I also want to make sure I recognize former Commissioner Ted McKibben on the front row. Will you stand for us or wave your hand, please? Let's give him round of applause. Moving on to item one of our agenda. Which are public recognitions and presentations. First up is Fire Prevention Week, Black Fire Department. Come forward at this time. Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire. As four out of five deaths occur at home each year, U.S. Fire Department has responded to 362,000 home fires. In 2016, 2,735 people were killed. And whereas newer homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster, many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe. Residents should identify places in their home where fires can start and eliminate those hazards. Whereas properly installed and working smoke alarms in every sleeping room and outside sleeping areas cuts the risk of dying. In reported home fires, in half, when smoke alarms sound, residents should respond by going outside immediately to a designated meeting area. Whereas the residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan at least twice each year are more prepared and therefore will be more likely to survive a home fire. And whereas Palaka's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrences of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, Palaka residents can learn how to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their home. And whereas the 2018 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Look, Listen, Learn." Be aware, fire can happen anywhere. Effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaka, Florida, together with the members of the Palaka City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of October 7th through 13th, 2018. As Fire Prevention Week throughout the City of Palaka, and I urge all citizens to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by accident in the building immediately, and participate in many public safety activities and efforts of the City of Palaka Fire Department during this weekend throughout the year. Witness whereof, appearing to set my hand, and constantly be affixed the seal of the City of Palaka, Florida, on this 27th day of September of the year 2018. Terrell Hill Mayor, Mayor Lawson Brown, Rufus Borton, Justin Campbell, Tammy McCaskill. Commissioners, I entertain a motion.
Motion second.
There's a motion and a second by a Commissioner McCaskill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries unanimously. Chief of law, present.
Thank you, Commissioners and figures. We're looking forward to this year. We're going back out in our schools again. We've got several on the book for this week. We couldn't do it without our commission and our public partners throughout our community. That we do our annual golf tournaments and we do some fundraising stuff through like Bingo the Palace that provides educational dollars that we can go out to the schools and give away different things to our students throughout the community. We'd like to say thank you. I think Mayor Hill did a great job, you know, saying what we need to do with exiting our home immediately. If you do hear your smoke detector sound, even if there's nothing there, that's what we're here for, is always calls. Even if your smoke detector goes off and there's nothing there, call and let us check. If we have the tools to check your homes and stuff, let's make sure we're safe, okay? Other than that, thank you all. Have a great night.
Next up. We have an introduction. Dr. Anthony Woods, Executive Director, Palaka Housing Authority. We'll get the Palaka Housing Authority come forward at this time. I want to take this time out. We want to introduce to the community Dr. Woods. Dr. Woods is the successor to John Nelson, who served the Palaka Housing Authority for many years, recently retired. I want Dr. Woods to come forward, speak to the community of the home, introduce himself. But I want us to give a hearty Palaka welcome to Dr. Woods.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Great to see such great attendance and turnout. And I'm sure that students, parents, guardians, educators, and administrators alike are very appreciative of the support as well as to the commission. Thank you, Mayor Hill and the commission for your support and introduction. We are establishing and reestablishing new policies and the like within the ranks of Palaka Housing Authority. I brought today several of those tools that we'll be utilizing. I present to the mayor on behalf of its board of commissioners and team members, stakeholders alike. That is, consisting of our total values. And it's something that we are applying not only to the agency, but we hope to be able to reinforce those same total values within each individual respective homes. We feel as though it's necessary that we respect every stakeholder in every matter, that we exude integrity in providing that respect, and we exhume customer loyalty and customer focus along the way, and that we have fun in the process while we're doing it all. But at the end of the day, that we ensure that we are providing one of our most essential needs to the most needed within our community. And we hope to do that in partnership with all of you. And again, thank you for the introduction and thank you for your support.
We also have on the agenda presentation from Scott Dudley from the Fort League of Mayors. Mr. Dudley runs a little behind, so we'll pass this until Mr. Dudley actually arrives in from Tallahassee. Student of the Month has been canceled again, so we'll continue with that next month. I heard somebody might think that's not funny. This month, we're students of the month. No, we're going to do a... Vice Mayor Brown, if you could join me?
I might want to get one of my other commissioners to stand with you because that's kind of a large number for me to stand. I got to slow down.
All right. We will actually have Commissioner Campbell, who was today. Are you starting to volunteer?
No.
Fine, I thought she was.
I thought she was.
I stand so y'all gonna know the Commissioner Campbell, not me. I'm too short. He's too tall.
So this is our first student of the month activity for the year. As customary, we'll have the plaques for our administrators who are company, the students this time. The way the process works is we will have the student come up along with the representative from the school. You'll line up across the front of the room, at which time, we'll then have the administrators leave the front. We'll take a picture with the newspaper for the students. And then we'll have an opportunity during recess for every parent to take their just memorialize this event. But before we get started, we always want to make sure that we take time out to say thank you to people who don't always get a chance to hear thank you. And that's the educators who are usually aligned across the back of the room and in the hallways. But we want to make sure that we take time out to thank you for the work we've done with our children and for the great jobs going on. We've nicely seen over the last couple of years, we've seen the graduation rate exceed 80% and the school district is growing tremendously. And we definitely thank you guys for the work that you've done with our young people. So again, let's thank all the educators. Will you please wave your hand? Initially, the next group that we always want to thank are our family members and friends and neighbors who will join, who come in and join in the celebration for our children. Where any family members, anyone who's accompanying our young people today, would you please stand and be recognized because this would not be possible without your influence and your efforts. All parents and families, please stand. Also, we always like to put the disclaimer out that I'm guaranteed to put your at least two names throughout this process, so if I do, please correct me and we will move forward. Our certificates read as follows. Outstanding student awards presented by the City of Palaka City Commission. This is to certify that each student is awarded the certificate for academic excellence, citizenship, and attendance, given on this 27th day of September, 2018. First up, from Brownlee Pierce Elementary, Pearl Lopez Martinez. Turn around, applause. Next up, from Tuppence Reading Center Charter School, Grayson Smith. From the Elix Miller School, Madison Hanson. From James J. Long Elementary School, Noah Jaramillo. From Jenkins Middle School, Simarius Mitchell. Kelly Smith Elementary, Wyatt Palmer. From Mellon Elementary School, Linwood Alexander Aldrich III. From Mowgli Elementary School, Yamar Montero. From Palaka High School, Kendall Hutchinson. From Our Baptist Academy, Hayden McGinnis. From Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, Asia Murray. Last but not least, from Putnam Elementary, Casey Mae James. Casey James. Not here, we're getting a photo from Edge. Just as we always have, one of the things that has stuck with me over the years as a third grader, many of you can't imagine being a third grader. But as a third grader, my teacher was dyspiric. And every day she started our class out, she gave us one thing to say. And it simply says, "I am somebody. If my mind can't conceive it and my heart can't believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody." Here I am today, 46 years old, and it sticks with me the same way it did as a little kid. We embrace it because you guys are somebody, you're somebody special, you're somebody destined for greatness. And I encourage each and every one of you, dream the impossible dream. Dream out the side of your circumstances and you make the sky a little bit. We look for you guys to do great things. We are absolutely proud of you and the work that you're doing. And we look to see you here again and in other places representing our city as well as you have. So thank you guys for all the work that you've done thus far, and we look for more and more great things from you. Remember you are somebody. And again, let's give a round of applause very much. What we're going to do at this time is we're going to do, we're going to put three sets so that we can take our picture for the newspaper. And then we will line up in a single file line down this rope. And we will take pictures, we'll take family pictures, media pictures as necessary during our recess so that you memorialize the event. Please stand and recess.
Thank you. She looks so beautiful.
Thank you.
Moving on to our agenda items number two, which are public comments. Public comments limited to three minutes. No actual be taken on topics of discussion. Anyone here wishing to speak during public comment, please fill out a yellow speaker's card and we will, so that we can have it for the record with all your information. First up, I want to call Mr. Judge Newfellow. And then we'll come back to that, that's on the agenda.
Good, thank you. So Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, and Mr. Holmes, the city manager, I'd like to just take a quick minute publicly recognize the work of John Yule at the airport. We have that on our agenda a little bit later about a price increase for the hangars. And John was the man that instigated the entire idea, driving good thoughts and good actions, good business sense. And he's done a fabulous job according to your advisory board that you have. And I can speak on behalf of them, we count it a big honor to serve y'all and our community in this effect. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Before you give me a run out of time on a rail, it's my recommendation, but the commission's going to approve it for the record.
Thank you, sir. Also, we have a speaker card from Ms. Roz... Ficker? Ficker. I'm sorry, Mr. Roz Ficker. Just come up just for the record. Say your name and your address, so we have it.
Hi, I'm Rob Ficker. Live at 2420 Carr Street. I'm the chairman of Peaceful Alliance for Medical Marijuana. I have a statewide petition out. It allows medical patients here in Florida to grow up to nine plants, nine marijuana plants. Right here in Florida, our medical program is not allowed medical patients to grow the plant. It's very expensive. There is no insurance involved. It basically prices out certain people out of the medical marijuana market. And, you know, I was just at an event the other day, last week, for opiate use over on Krill Avenue. Here having a hearing questioning, you know, what's new about the opiate crisis? Well, we already know it's medical marijuana. It's very clear that people get off their pills when they start using marijuana. And what I want to do is I want to, there's something called Home Rule Charter. And every charter of city or county in Florida has Home Rule Charter. And all these charters allow for the initiative process to happen. And this can happen on a local level because this requires three quarters of a million signatures, which is basically impossible. But Home Rule Charter allows a vote on a local level, just on like the City of Palaka itself. You could have a vote on this idea that I have that's called Home Rule Cannabis. And what it does is it violates zero state laws. The initiative cannot violate a state law. What it does is it brings to a vote whether or not people think allowing people to have cannabis on their own residential property, only on their own residential property, is acceptable, and whether or not they should be arrested, fined, or cited for that, whether or not at all, the vote would be to say that they should not be cited for any purpose for having cannabis on their residential property, not on public property, not on commercial property. So it is not an jurisdiction of police officers. It is out of blame view. You're not on a habit of blame view. So it's actually, we can vote on this. For the City of Palaka, it would make news statewide. It would move this cause forward. It would literally stabilize, people would stop denying opiate use disorder. I suggest that we draw up this initiative. I want to work with the city to draw the initiative and draw to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. I want to go ahead and take one item out of order, and that's going to be item number five on the agenda, which is to concur on the appointment of Brett Dennis as General Manager of the Palaka Gas Authority for a recommendation of Palaka Gas Authority Board of Directors. Can we come up at this time and hear item number five?
So Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, Mr. Holmes, the city manager. Again, I'd like to say a word of thanks on behalf of the Palaka Gas Authority Board of Directors for letting us serve you, our city and our community. I think it's very notable at this moment, if you allow me to mention, the service of Mr. Kidner. He's done an outstanding job for our city and for the gas authority in our community. And I think it's also very important for us to recognize that without his dedication, long hours of free service, all the intelligence that he has brought to our gas authority, we never would have had such a successful transfer of the building of the city water sewer department. Not only did he find meters that we didn't know about, but he corrected rates on meters that were undercharged, some of them never charged. And he's just done an outstanding job for all of us. As you can probably assume, he's leading us, but he's not really because we're going to keep him around for at least six months under tenure. But he's just done an outstanding job for our community. So can we give him a round of applause?
Don, you do understand you can't handle that work, right?
Are there any more meters out there?
He's still looking there. Our Board of Directors, of course, includes, Mark Spalding is not here tonight, and Brian Scream is not, and James Vickers, who's our senior member, and Amy Kylie. And we just are really honored to serve y'all in our community in this capacity. And then, of course, we'd like to present Mr. Brett Dennis, who we found in Boise, Idaho. Now this is after like eight months of searching.
Welcome to warm weather.
Thank you.
It's warm there, just not humid.
Trying to find a gas man has been really hard for us. And we're very happy to have him, his wife April, her beautiful teenage daughter, she's 14.
And 17.
17. And they've already bought a house on 208 Brunson Street before they even moved. Madison. We think we found a well-suited man. Now he also drove for three days straight in a U-Haul truck, pulling a boat to get here. So he has slept on it a few hours. Would you like to say a couple words?
Be happy to, be happy to. I wasn't prepared for a speech, but just the feeling that I felt tonight, the feeling of community, really impressed. And I guess I also have to say, the feeling of God being involved in everything you guys do. I think you take that for granted. That's not everywhere that it's like that. And really, really, my wife and I really warmed to that and the feeling of community and the presence of God in everything you guys do. So we're excited, glad to work hard for you and be very customer focused. Excited to give you all everybody and let you get to know us.
Thank you.
And welcome up. Welcome on.
If you have any more work, I might publicly thank Mr. Holmes for all of his work, going through all these candidates and critiquing them and I guess disapproving them. You know, we did a lot of that. Don, thank you for your help. This is huge and we surely wouldn't be where we are today without you. So thank you all very, very much. That is all.
With order of business left, and this time I will make a motion at least.
Mr. Brett Dennis as the General Manager of Palaka Gas Authority.
Second. There's a motion on the floor, there's motion on the floor in a second by Commissioner Borum. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, let's just call off. Favor, say aye. Close motion carries unanimously. What, Borum?
Welcome to the floor.
Can I say one thing? I think I may remiss without mentioning that, you can't, Mr. Mayor, may I? The gas authority searched long and hard for a qualified person to deal with, the gas authority to carry on with what Mr. Kidner has really helped establish. Any of you who have tried to help recruit professionals to this community understand that our skill system doesn't have the best reputation in the world. And I'm not saying that's deserved, I'm just saying it's the truth. People go on the internet and they see something and, you know, I will say that... you know, I will say that, I have to mention that our superintendent of schools was called and agreed to come to our meeting at which Mr. Dennis and his wife came when they drove down, flew down to see Palacka, spent some time with Mr. Dennis. I think actually he showed him some schools. He's got 15 acres. He's bringing from Idaho to Palacka, Florida. And you can imagine, that's a daunting exercise. And I think that the superintendent of schools made them feel comfortable. And then, also, I have to say kudos to them, because they knew what the internet says about our schools. And their position is that you get out of skill a lot of what you put into it. And their kids were willing to go that route. So, just want to say that, you know, there are still people who are willing to look beyond internet headlines and look at what a community offers. So, we're excited about it.
And Mr. Dennis, just for the record, if you want to keep blue and oranges your colors, you've got University of Florida right down the street.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
So, again, welcome aboard, and we definitely thank you for selecting Palacka as your new home.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving the agenda, moving to, back on course, item three of the agenda, which is our consent agenda. We have items eight through H on the agenda. I'm going to ask that item G be removed. Are there any items that you wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
Item D was pulled.
And item D was pulled.
G and D.
G, D has been pulled.
I'll make a motion.
The next items.
I'll make a motion that we accept all the items that, excluding the ones that have been removed, which is D, and the one to pull for discussion, which is G.
There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
And a second to accept all items on the consent agenda outside of G and D, with G being up for discussion. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 3G on the agenda, which is to adopt Resolution 2018R-96 authorizing the execution of a lease upon completion of construction of facility with Tater Farms LLC for parcel number 24-10-26-000-02-050-0011 adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant. And before we go into that item and get the caption, I want to make sure that I do recognize our partners who are in the room today, our SBDC partners who are here, their contract was on the agenda. If you guys would just stand for me so that we can recognize you, thank you for all your hard work.
Do you want to go ahead and sign your contract?
If we, if you guys can just wait, we'll take a quick break, and then we'll make sure we sign your contract and get everything taken care of. Moving on to item G. Caption, please.
Item G, adopt Resolution 2018R-96 authorizing the execution of a lease upon completion of construction of facility with Tater Farms LLC for parcel number 24102600002500011 adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant.
So, move...
Second.
Before we do that, there are a couple items. Before we recognize that, I want to make sure that we have some concerns from council as it relates to the contract. Want to make sure that everyone's fully aware of what the premises are. And we'll go from there. Mr. Holmes, if you, if that's okay with the motion. Commissioner Kim?
Yeah, I'm not questioning the overall purpose to be achieved. I just wanted to bring to your attention some terms of the lease that I think that you want to be aware of, and then you decide how you want to proceed. The lease is for 10 years with two five-year options that are automatically renewable. It's not a secret that I have a lot of concern about leases of this lease. Now, sometimes there's a compelling cause to have a lease of that lease. Jonathan has been engaged in, Mr. Griffith has been engaged in the negotiations with Tater Farms, so he may have some justification or at least explanation for the length. But I wanted to bring to your attention, it is a 10-year lease with two five-year extensions, which makes it, in all the essence, a 20-year lease. And that's, again, beyond the range that I'm normally comfortable seeing the city enter into, but there may be reasons for it. There, I want to highlight the avalon tax issue. Jonathan, has that been addressed?
Yes, I changed it to the language you suggested, sir.
Okay, great. And then, with the exception of that and some clauses that I added to include some language that would allow the city to recoup their attorney's fees in the event of litigation, I don't really have an issue with the lease. There were some wording changes that I suggested. We sort of, we changed to eliminate some what I thought might be ambiguous terms or some terms that were too vague to enforce. But the big thing is, my question about avalon tax is to make sure that, you know, city property is normally tax exempt, but if the city property is a subject of a lease for profit, it can trigger an avalon taxation issue. And I want to make sure that if that, if that trigger is pulled, that the less E would be the one paying the avalon tax on the property, and then, of course, the lease. So, maybe Mr. Griffiths could speak to the need or reason for the lease. As all of you know, this property is basically to be incorporated into the city's efforts to eliminate this discharge into the river of effluent by allowing for the discharge of spray and also, I think, solids on this pasture or crop land, which is going to be used for growing sod primarily. So, I'll let it go at that. And Jonathan?
Yes, sir. Commissioner, it's Mayor. In response to the term of the lease, that was the provision that Tater Farms requested as the sole respondent to the RFP. Staff did reach out, and we actually agree with Mr. Holmes that the longer term is not agreeable. But we did reach out to the IPIS Extension Office to kind of get a bearing on the per-acre rental amount, to see where we stood for the average. And the average is well below $100 per acre, and we're proposing a higher amount than what is typically seen in the industry. However, it is the will of the Commission. We'll go back to the negotiating table with Tater Farms and renegotiate the term of the lease. Right now, it is an initial 10-year with two five-year extensions.
I would like to draw my motion and make a, to restate the motion, that we tabled this discussion per your discussion with the RFP respondent and get that motion.
Second?
There's a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any discussion? Just a quick discussion on it. I think we sent him back, we sent him back with some direction.
I do have a question. What would be your recommended length for, for the lease agreement? What would be your recommendation?
The less E, we'll be investing a lot of time and money in this operations, the 200-acre operation. They have an adjacent 70-acre operation. I think it would be reasonable to allow the initial 10-year with shorter renewable term. They are laying out a significant amount of cash on their part.
Jonathan, can you amplify on the improvements they're going to be, that they're going to be constructing?
Yes. Part of the reason we got a larger per-acre lease amount is because the city did receive some grant revenue to install the spray field mechanisms. They're going to be responsible for the final preparation of the land, which includes some root breaking as well as grading. They're also going to be responsible for all maintenance and operation costs of this facility. And they will have to take our effluent, because current consumption use permits require that you take beneficial reclaim versus groundwater withdrawal where it's available. So, we will be able to put close to a million gallons of water on their facility, and they won't be able to say no. So, there are restrictions. And as far as costs, it's mostly limited to final root breaking and the operation of the facility.
Is there any way we can get the benefit to the city for, what would the benefit of the city be? Can you give that in a write-up or whatever, as it relates to this contract or whatever? Because 20 years...
I do not have my summary in front of me. Vickers, do you have my summary?
Yes.
Well, I just, I just like, we tape, it's being tabled now, but what I, I would like to see at some, at some point in time before we make a vote on it.
Actually, Commissioner, there's some very concrete numbers that it is a net positive to the city.
Okay.
$20,000 in lease revenue, and there's some pretty significant operational savings, because we're no longer trucking or buying solids.
Says the proposed operation is expected to increase revenues by $20,000 a year and decrease operational costs by approximately $16,000 a year.
And Jonathan, they were the only respondent to the RFP?
Yes, sir. And I think the other thing that's important is when you talk about implementing the vacuum filtration system, talking about what that does in terms of savings to potable water at the peak of the program, which is roughly a million gallons of water that you save.
Yeah, I'd just like to see all the, the total benefits as it relates to, you know, what we're giving up and what we're getting.
And staff would request some, you know, some direction, be it the initial length of the lease term you'd like to see and the renewable terms.
I think one of the things that we kind of put out there through conversation when it came up with the, with the Marina, is that the comfort zone is somewhere around five to seven on the top end, seven on the initial term. Maybe from the renewable side of it, that would be something that the Commission as a whole can have a conversation about. But we've kind of set a standard, in essence, as to where we want to be. We're trying to get out of the 20-year leases, per se, but also understanding that there are renewables that are in place which create certain triggers. But it seems like, from everything we've done from a significant investment standpoint, when you look at what's in place, we look at the grant itself, which is the significant portion of this, of this particular piece. The fact that this project will create jobs, it will create revenues, it'll create savings, it does all those things. We threshold, it's, you know, there's not much difference from seven to 10, I think, overall. But it at least, I think, gives a, at least some foundational point as to where we are. That's just my thought. And anyone else from the Commission can come and chime in.
The thing you can get that are so long, if another commission comes along and a better deal, somewhere down the line, things change in how they do things. You wouldn't want to have, have it where you put something in place that they couldn't do better for the city.
I would take into consideration what they are going to put into it. I think that's the overall factor of making sure that we do accommodate them for at least what we can, and then we take care of that problem when it comes back before whatever commission at that time.
Good. Sorry, sir. I think when we look at this, this project, the amount of contribution, I think, both from what the city's received by way of grants from Water Management District, also the public-private partnership, we're talking about a $2 million project, which has significant benefits as it relates to the one condition that we've had difficulty with, which is the spray field. And we, if you recall, not long ago, we were, we were flooding the cemetery in an effort to, you know, in an effort to have emissions. So, just remember those pieces of the puzzle when we started talking. I think we're on the max again of where we are, at least as a starting point to figure out. I know we have represented from Ted Partners here, right?
They really will take it.
And so, what's, and I guess we just need to give directions to, to Mr. Griffith as far as if there's, if there's an issue with the initial term, do we, does anyone think the initial term needs to be shorter than 10 years?
I mean, I'd say 10 years, and I'd go with your argument to complement what he said in coming up with the half the medium. I think we should go from anywhere between the seven and the 10 years as a starting point. Can it be five? Or five is too short?
It can't be, but I think with the level of investment you're talking about in this project, five may be too short. And it may be something that puts us in a position where we lose out. And that's the part that you don't want to be in.
Maybe Mr. Griffiths could be given the authority to negotiate and see more about what the respondent, the sole respondent felt was their minimum acceptable initial term. And if they can go to seven or whatever, then fine. And if they just absolutely say they can't. Now, did you guys put numbers on the cost of maintaining all the spray field equipment, which they're going to do at their expense, correctly?
Yes, sir. I have not put numbers on that, because it's always, it was always going to be at their cost.
Right. But I mean, that's another, that's another benefit.
It's a factoid acquired at that cost, yes, sir.
But the 10 years doesn't bother me. It's the renewal or another 10. They make it 20.
They're five, they're five and 10.
They're five and five.
But they're automatically renewable, you can't...
Yep, it's automatic.
Yeah, so, I mean...
So, the renewability portion of it, determine what the exits are.
I guess I should say the option to renew is on them, and we don't have any input. So, for all practical purposes, if they want to keep it for 20, they're going to keep it for 20. And your increase in the rent is only by the CPI, which hasn't been a whole lot in the last five, 10, 15 years. So, I'm not, I'm not downing it. I'm just saying those are factors for you to think about.
And so, is that enough information or your direction? Can I put you where you need to be?
Yes, sir. I think we know the initial term needs to be shorter. I think maybe we can structure a clause for the city to exit lease.
At least a mirror clause.
And then we'll see what there are meant to in regards to the renewable, renewable years.
Yeah. Typically, the exits are going to have...
...the cost for the maintaining and operating the actual spray facilities.
Typically, you'll have some type of mirror clause when noticed as it relates to the exit on the renewable. And so, that's always the position that we're in. It's kind of, it's not really no different than what we talked about from the River Flank first time earlier.
Thank you.
Sir, appreciate it. And most on the floor, you for the discussion?
Please.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Griffith, for your work on this project, along with Ms. Tucker, and also Mr. Holmes as well. I want to go back to item one on our agenda. I want to make sure that we take time to recognize Mr. Scott Dudley from the Florida League of Mayors.
I know who we sent someone to board with.
I'm just happy since I'm bringing you along.
She's not in the house. She want to be under with Scott.
Scott takes us to Washington, and I think it was whistle-buzz. He always loses one or two of them.
So...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And members of the council, I am Scott Dudley. I'm with the Florida League of Cities. I'm the Legislative Director there, also the Executive Director of the Florida League of Mayors. And the League of Mayors has a program that we call City Catalyst Program. And we partner with a group called the Florida Business Watch. And Florida Business Watch is a group of businesses that essentially lead the business with state and local government entities. And they're partners with the League of Cities and the League of Mayors in terms of making sure that legislation doesn't infringe on Home Rule or on the people that are doing business with the cities and state, that it doesn't infringe on their ability to do that work. So, the program that we have with the League of Cities and Florida Business Watch is a city catalyst program, and cities submit a program, an idea that they want to see funded for their city. And we have about $8,000 that we distribute to cities across the state of Florida through a grant program. The city submits an application. Not everyone that it submits gets to have me come bring a big check. And so, I'm really honored tonight to be able to come to Palacka to bring you this check for the race issue study circles program that your city is engaged in. And we're really happy to be a part of that, and just my part of all with that. And I'm really pleased that I can bring you this big check.
Sure.
This is the first check that's been passed out to Mayor. So, our mayor is on the wall when he goes to the Florida people to get stuff done. And I know that I sit on the board in San Francisco.
Are you going to DC?
We go to Washington, DC, and lobby up there.
To the best.
They don't like how fast I walk them.
Scott walks over to DC in three minutes. Also, we've got a number of people in the audience today who've had an opportunity to participate in the town hall meetings as it relates to race relations, and also participated in the race study circles. We've got new circles that are starting. Gay Esprison is not here today. She's the chair of our race issue study circle. She had to leave out. But this is an awesome opportunity for us to continue race relations within the community, to enhance it. The conversations we have with Scott Dudley and Mike Sittick from the Florida League of Cities... Dudley and Mike Sittick from the Florida League of Cities has been, um, very critical for us and right now, we're cutting edge in Putnam County, the circles are expanding, there are a number of people in this room who participated in both the town halls and the studies and if you get a chance, what it does more than anything else, it creates understanding, empathy and relationships that you didn't know, um, that you could have when you talk about those circles. We've met people from Aldrin Wallace, like, uh, Mr. Best of the New Yorker, uh, and his experiences are part different than some of us, um, throughout and I just think that what it does, it binds millennials, uh, it binds different cultures, different races, different segments of the country together and it just makes Palaca better and one thing is Brown's always said, we're better together and that's what it does and so we thank Scott Dudley for speeding from Tallahassee. And the work that he does with the Florida League of Mayors, um, you know, I'm blessed to be sitting on the floor for the League of Mayors this year, but we definitely thank Scott for what he's done and how committed he's been to Palaca and Scott has really been a godsend for us as a community, um, and he works tirelessly just to try to help out all the efforts throughout between the Florida League of Mayors and the Florida League of Cities, addressing a lot of the legislative issues as well.
So, do you want to take it? So, yeah, I gotta be on a couple of semis on, uh, one hundred. No passing them.
One, two, three, one more, okay, one more.
Mayor, I, you guys have actually received the, the paper check already or you should have?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Becker.
Did you all, did you get the check yet? Reese, you got, you got the paper check already?
I am not aware of it, but I can, tomorrow and I'll be sure.
All right, cool, I'll, I'll check it all right, too. I say that because I'm about to take this check back, so.
I know, we're.
You get, you get the real check, I just, this is our, our front of our check.
We can keep it and change it and take a picture.
I think a real check is in the building.
Scott, thank you. It's good to see you, but it's even better to see you with this check.
Stop speeding.
Walk in the driver's room, we'll commission tomorrow.
Riding bikes, everything.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I am very proud of this commission. Uh, a lot of times when I've gone up, because I've been here a number of years, our commission has not been as active with the Florida League of Cities, there are four hundred and forty cities in the state of Florida that participate in the league and they do a little bit of everything for us, our insurance, lobby, just not lobby, just a bunch of stuff for us and our team here has got involved and become partners to help make, make decisions for the whole state, not just for the, uh, city of Palaca, Putnam County. So as you see us sit here, this is not only a job we have, we are sitting and impacting all big decisions, big and small, that are made throughout the state and our people don't know that, they think we just come and meet and fight for, twice a month, it's more to it than that and show, this shows now that people are recognizing us, even though we're a small city, that we have stuff on the ball and race relations is a wonderful thing we working on now because this country is in such turmoil and for the mayor to come up with a, a thing like this to help us all get along better and I feel as if we're better together, I don't care how many of us it is or who it is, I think it's a wonderful thing and I think we all need to remember it and say thank you some kind, because.
Thank you. We get to this and we all get to thank you.
That's a, that's a standard. Thank you. I, I just think that where we are as a city, we're moving forward and, um, I'm excited about, you know, what's to come overall and we just continue to be innovative and we continue, um, just to be, just to be mobile in this community and it will be fine. We're going to go ahead, thank you again for coming in, Scott, we definitely appreciate you, um, and all the efforts that we have from the Florida League of Cities. We're going to move on to item four of the agenda, our second public hearing for our trend notes for fiscal year 2018-19, our final budget and milage rate for 2018, 2019 budget year, six point four zero 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 mils proposed. The taxing authority levying this property tax is the city commission of the city of Palaca, the rollback rate is five point four five six nine mils per one thousand dollars of assessed value, the percentage decrease is seventeen point two eight percent higher than the rollback milage rate, the operating milage rate to be levied is six point four zero 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 mils per one thousand dollars of assessed value. Item A is resolution setting the final fiscal year 2018-19 milage rate at six point four zero 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 mils proposed for adoption.
Resolution number 2018 dash R dash nine nine, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Palaca, Putnam County, Florida, adopting the final operating milage rate for the purpose of levying the ad valorem taxes for the city of Palaca, Putnam County for fiscal year 2018 dash 2019, whereas the city commission of the city of Palaca, Putnam County, Florida, during regular session on July twelfth, 2018, adopted, adopted the city of Palaca resolution number 2018 dash R dash six one, setting the fiscal year 2018 dash 2019 tentative milage rates following a public hearing as required by Florida statute two zero zero point zero six five and, whereas the city commission of the city of Palaca, Putnam County, Florida, held a first public hearing on the fiscal year 2018 dash 2019 proposed budget during regular session on September thirteenth, 2018, and adopted city of Palaca resolution number 2018 dash R dash eight eight to adopt the tentative and proposed milage rate as required by Florida statute two zero zero point zero six five and, whereas the city commission of the city of Palaca, Putnam County, Florida, held a second public hearing during regular session on September twenty seventh, 2018, regarding the adoption of the final budget as required by Florida statute two zero zero point zero six five and, excuse me, whereas the gross taxable value for operating purposes not exempt from taxation within the city of Palaca, Putnam County, has been certified by the county property appraiser to the city of Palaca as one hundred and thirty million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. Now, therefore be it resolved by the city commission of the city of Palaca, Putnam County, Florida, that, one, the fiscal year 2018 dash 2019 operating milage rate for the city of Palaca is six point four zero 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 mils, which is more than the rollback rate of five point four five six nine mils by seventeen point two eight percent. Two, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption, passed and adopted by the city commission of the city of Palaca, Florida, on this twenty-seventh day of September of 2018.
So move.
There's a motion on the floor in a second.
We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further questions called? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rufus Borum.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mary Lawson Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Yes.
Mayor Charles Hill.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item B, resolution adopting the final fiscal year 2018-2019 budget for adoption.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Palaca, Putnam County, Florida, adopting the final budget for the fiscal year 2018-2019, providing for the severability and providing for an effective date.
Motion to the side.
So move.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. We'll report for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Question is called. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rufus Borum.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mary Lawson Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Yes.
Mayor Charles Hill.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. We have now completed the budget. And we can't thank you for that. Just so that everybody knows, also, we have officially adopted a minimum wage of eleven dollars an hour. More importantly, for those individuals who have something, who come with skill sets as simple as a CDL driver's license certification, you can get fourteen dollars an hour if you're struggling to pay, so we find ourselves in a situation where we are moving forward in creating livable wages for our employees and making sure that we get that money to spend seven times over in our communities and that is very critical to this community moving forward because it gets people out of positions where they are now forced to be renters and they can become homeowners, it allows them to be able to have the expendable resources and that discretionary income that they can now come in and be patrons at local businesses and that, and to provide additional educational opportunities and other things. It creates greater quality of life in the community. We've talked to several community partners within, from a governmental standpoint and they are, and they are willing to, to look at their budgets and see if they can follow suit from a minimal standard so that we can start to increase the wages overall within the county and, and have that, and have this be, uh, really kind of a, a, a spreading, an infectious spreading of a great thing within the community and so we are very excited about this and, you know, enough can't be said about the efforts of staff and getting us to a point where we have reached efficiencies which allow us to be able to pass savings on to staff so that that money can benefit our community as a whole, um, and that, and I'm just excited about that, I'm ecstatic and so, anything else for the commission? Logan Becker has done before, he's a huge, Logan Becker has done an excellent job.
Yes, he has.
That's he, Jiggers has come in and taken the bull by the horn and worked diligently with Ms. Becker on this, with, um, our staff, Mr. Griffith, Ms. Tucker, everyone, Mr. Holmes, all of our, all of our staff overall, our department heads have really done a great job, I'm looking in the back, Mr. Lachman, Mr. Yule, Chief Shaw, um, even you, Chief Grimes. Miss, I see Miss Robinson somewhere hiding back in the hallways, but you guys have done a great job in, in making sure that we continue to operate in a black, you know, not very long ago was, did we find ourselves in a situation where the city was forced to pull money out of the budget, we were forced to take money from the gas authority, um, just so that we could balance budgets and we got to make sure, and that wasn't fair in a lot of ways to many folks, but they did what was necessary to keep this city going and we're in a, we're in a much better situation and, and I'm excited about what it, you know, what continues as we begin to continue to build our reserve and start to deal and tackle these infrastructure issues and so that's my comment, Commissioner Borum.
Well, in addition to the, um, quality of life, um, living wage increased to eleven dollars, we also did a four percent increase as well this year, so that was another thing that we did across the board, so.
Costum.
It's in addition to the, the livable wage deal, so we're, we're, we're making things happen and this is second, the second time in four years, the second time in four years, so we are, we know what our, our people need, we value our employees and, um, we can't say enough, um, we just can't say enough about their great work and their great efforts.
And kudos to this commission for the workers you've done as well as it relates to the budget and it relates to just passing of the vision necessary for us to continue to move Palaca forward and to restore the gem and so you guys are, have been awesome as it relates to what we've got in place. We've also have, um, tackled item number five, we move on to a resolution for item number six, resolution authorizing execution of interlocal agreement with the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners for building official inspection and permitting services as for adoption, Mr. Lachman.
A resolution of the city of Palaca, Florida, authorizing the adoption and execution of an interlocal agreement with the Putnam County, Florida, Board of County Commissioners concerning services regarding building department administration, permitting inspections and enforcement as required under the Florida Building Code as amended.
Any questions from, from Mr. Lachman before we get started? If not, and a motion.
So move.
Second. There's a motion by Commissioner McCaskill, it's the second by Commissioner Borum, we're now open the floor for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing, is there any further discussion? Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously, resolution passes, thank you very much for your work, Mr. Lachman, as it relates to this item, also, Ms. Jiggers, you got something?
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Lachman, thank you to Mr. Holmes, uh, for and everyone that was involved in vetting all of this out, we had an eleven-hour push to get it to this final place and of course the county, you know, worked with us and so this now goes on to Putnam County and then we will have into, successfully integrated those services, things will run a lot smoother.
And I think it saves us, it saves us money in the long run, it's a zero-sum game in many ways, but it also, it allows us to have unified services, um, and so that we can create greater customer service.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We're moving forward.
Yes.
Moving on.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir, go ahead, get to the side.
I'd like to, to, uh, to bring thanks to all the commission, the commissioners and the city council here about the Clubhouse International, we do have it here now, we have Clubhouse International, so not only airport, we're international now as far as help for people that can't help themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Best.
Thank you.
Just for the record, that's Mr. Zinni Best, um, and the city has been working diligently, if you can recall from other meetings, to try to deal with some of the issues that we have as it relates to mental health services and, uh, mental health clubhouse, uh, that effort was, uh, started with the help of Mr. Best and also Dr. Alex Sharp within E, uh, who, um, passed away through the process, um, we've had an opportunity to go over to, uh, Putnam Safety Services, um, they were excited about the possibility and, uh, we've had the, uh, the Gainesville International Clubhouse Organization come on board and, and we're now moving forward, but creating additional opportunities for, uh, mental health services, um, and a safety net for people within our community and, uh, and it's very necessary to live around our community, uh, we see people on a daily basis, those who are close to us, uh, family members and friends or even folks that are homeless that we see on the streets who are affected by, by mental health issues every day with no place to turn for help because there are limited services within the community and a lot of services get cut as budgets get cut across the state and so, um, it's, it's definitely, uh, something that's very critical to us as we move forward and I want to thank, uh, Ms. Jiggers for assisting in that effort and getting us to a point where we've got together, Chief Grimes was there alone with the police department to also assist in making those efforts a reality for the city. So. Zinni Best, before we say it, it has a relentless spirit, this is his passion, he doesn't take no for an answer, uh, it was a great story, if you ever get a chance to sit down and talk to him, but he has really been the catalyst from a citizen's standpoint of pushing this issue with the city and the county and making sure that we are aware of those who don't really understand the effects of mental health, uh, and mental illness, uh, you know, if you get a chance to talk to Mr. Best and hear his story, you truly understand how important this is to our community. We're going to move forward with item seven on the agenda, which is an ordinance amending Appendix A, fee schedule and corresponding code of chapter fifty, Parks and Recreation, Special Events, chapter sixty-six, Solid Waste, chapter ninety-four subdivisions and chapter eighty-six, Utilities, Waste and Sewer Rates, second reading.
An ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, amending Appendix A, fee schedule of the municipal code of the city of Palaca as it pertains to fees and other charges relating to chapter five, Parks and Recreation, special, special events, facility rentals, rates for chapter sixty-six, Solid Waste, chapter seventy-four subdivisions, rates for chapter eighty-six, Utilities, and chapter ninety-four zoning actions, amending corresponding sections of Palaca Municipal Code for chapter fifty, Parks and Recreation, chapter sixty-six, Solid Waste, chapter eighty-six and division three Utilities, Cross Connection Control, Providing Perseverability and Providing an Effective Date.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Is there any discussion on these items? Seeing no discussion, call a question, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay, motion carries 401. Moving forward, with item eight on the agenda is an ordinance amending Chapter 94, the Code of Ordinance to Allow for the Location of Licensed Marijuana Dispensaries, meeting supplementary district standards in C1A, zoning districts within the City of Palacka, Second Reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palacka, Florida amending the zoning code, Chapter 94 of the Municipal Code, to allow medical marijuana dispensaries operating under certain zoning and design standards, providing percebability and providing an effective date.
So moved.
This is a motion on the floor in a second by Vice Mayor Brown. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, questions been called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We're now at item number nine on the agenda. City Manager and Administrative Reports. In the back of the room, we have Ms. Robinson. Seeing, since you're up, Mr. Griffith, you got anything?
Just, uh, the Bartram Frolic started just in time today to visit. It's a really amazing event that I was prepared to get down there and see the school children tomorrow and on Saturday. And we did get our inmates brought up to staff, inmates brought up to start in this Monday. So that's some great news. I got a psych officer.
So we've got Bartram Frolic, for those who couldn't hear. Bartram Frolic's all week. Last year, we had about 500 students who came through and took the tour along with the boat ride. I know the boat rides are going on again for kids as well. So we're looking forward to everyone participating in Bartram Frolic again this year with the Bartram Festival. It continues all weekend until Sunday. So if you get an opportunity, make it down to the riverfront, participate in those activities. It is absolutely awesome. Chief Shaw.
It's an opportunity as discussed in the past. Support for you guys quartering for at least that late week. I wanted to make sure you're able to take on information and see what wonderful things Palacka is doing in our community. I want to take the time to actually recognize our board, our board members for the section of the report lately for local chapter. They're doing a wonderful job in our community. Without them, we could never get the things that we want to get achieved in the community done. So, I have it in the past, I've been thanking the city and I thank our officers, but I'd love to thank our board for their hard work in the city. Something that goes with the thankless job and the volunteer time and they put in a tremendous amount of time and effort in the community. There's a number of different events in the package of the report that you see before you. Just a couple of things that I'll touch on and highlight on. We will be doing in the back of the package, you'll see, we have the Fall Festival coming up on the address there. It will not be held at the address, it will be held at downtown. That is the wrong address on the package, so it will be held at the riverfront this year. We're looking for fabulous event for the Fall Festival this year. I'm excited to see the wonderful things that the board has put together. And the assistance of Captain Williams and our members of the Police Department. It's gonna be a very fun event. The other event I want to speak on, as you know, is October. So we're doing our Trunk or Tree, our annual Trunk or Tree event. We will once again be held at the mall on Halloween. We have moved it up a little earlier so we can transition from downtown on that Bourbon Avenue straight to the mall. And we have provided wonderful activities and candy treats for the children in our community for a safe trick-or-treat event. That is in collaboration with a number of different organizations throughout the community, as well as Police Department, we will be tied in with the Fire Department, Public Works, and so on and so forth. We look forward to all of those events. And once again, we would love to see you all out of that event, being able to make sure you show up for our assistance.
What is the most fun, putting out candy?
Commissioner Borum. Again, if you have any questions about the report, I'll be glad to answer any questions now. If not, we'll be giving you another report in the next quarter.
Certainly appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Brown.
You have to get that shirt changed.
Real quick, you got some good news today. I got a phone call, there's a new fire truck rolling down, probably Monday or Tuesday next week. With it coming in next week, hopefully Thursday or Friday next week, we'll do some kind of ceremony, invite all of y'all out to do a ceremony for the fire truck. I don't like the response down to the end of there, Mr. Campbell, that I'm good.
I represent Putnam School District in Orlando.
What day?
Wednesday through Friday.
He's been waiting on that to come in.
We'll see what we can do.
Put it on live, just put it live.
We'll work on the schedule.
Yeah.
We're still gathering our data for ISO inspections coming up November the 4th. The inspector will be in town. It'll take six months probably thereafter, we'll have a result back from him. Fire Prevention Week, we've got several schools scheduled for us to come out and see the kids during Fire Prevention Weeks. Completed several of the more inspections of schools and they're all looking good. Kids are doing well, learning a lot. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Yule.
Just quick update on a project out of the airport to install about 4,000 feet of fence. That project was delayed because of all the rain we had, and that fence was supposed to go to go small. We had so much rain that we made a decision that the money for the project, we had to bring up the fence to higher ground, so that project going on. And following that, we released an accident in Hastings. Everything flipped over, and then you had a touch and goes here, I think it got on the internet to, you know, question Palacka. I did a few out there. But here, any rumors right now, please, Ms. Wilson. We check that fuel every single day. And we document our results like our provider has us to do. So if you have any questions or anything about fuel, I'm pleased to have you handy, glad to show them our quality sharing procedures.
Save the flood, all right?
Save the flood. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Becker.
I want to first start by saying thank you for all of your support. I had officially made it six months. But I want to thank the staff also, they've been so welcoming. And any questions that I have, and I have a lot of them, they have just been willing to help me. Everyone will be happy to know that it is here and we are here this weekend. My staff and me, we will be working to close up the books. It is a process, so we will have obviously a couple of months after to do some cleaning. But we want to do this timely. October 1 is on Monday, so I'm assuming I'll be extremely busy approving requisitions and such over there at the ready to buy. I think they might have a competition on who can buy most on October 1. Next week, the Hunter General will be here to start the 18-month follow-up. We have, we're finalizing our audit. They have a goal of Monday for the 16, 17 fiscal year to get it out for us. So we've been feverishly working on that. And like I said, uploading the now approved budget.
Thank you. Mr. Lochner.
So, Mr. Mayor, we had a new application coming in today for a plan development. It's called the Colleges of St. John's. It's about 6,800 block on St. John's Ave. It's across from, a little bit past the hospital across from Woodland Point on the south side. It's eighteen ages, it's about 194 units. It's a pretty significant project for us.
What's going with like the old K-Mart building? They look like people in and nobody knew.
I think it's the Planet Fitness or something.
They look like they're busy.
Yeah. Chief was looking at that.
Planet Fitness?
It's K-Mart.
Old K-Mart, old K-Mart building.
Yes, he was reviewing it for the fire code.
Right.
Are there any other, there was other units that were supposed to be part of that too? Planet Fitness and was it a couple of other outfits or no? No, okay.
Yeah, they, the developers asked, you know, to, they were trying to lease four spaces out, but this is the first space.
Okay.
They're still working with other tenants to try to fill the rest of the mill.
Thanks, sir. Good deal.
Ms. Tucker, you got anything?
Yes, I just wanted to state briefly also this weekend, the occupation of Palacka is in its ninth year. The cannon will be firing all day on Friday. Fourth graders come in for field trips, and then Saturday morning, they'll fire the cannon until about noon, about every 30 minutes. So if you live in the south side, someone really should have warned Mr. Griffin because he's right there across the street.
You got that, Ms. Ketchus?
I don't mind cannons, I just mind blue boxes.
Head of the ladder. Mr. Holmes?
I'm good, thanks.
Ms. Jiggers?
I want to thank Logan Becker and her staff for the tremendous job that they've done. Not only in bringing us current, or, you know, we're pretty much there working on the current audit, got the State Auditor General coming back in and getting this budget pushed through all the work. And Logan, you're doing a great job. Thank you so much. Want to thank Jonathan Griffin and Mandy Tucker for all of the tremendous job that they've done getting all the projects on these agendas. You guys might notice you've had some packed agendas here. We've done a lot of work trying to bring all this forward so that we can get going on first and start moving forward. Also, wanted to thank the Fire Department and the Police Department, Chief Shaw and Chief Grimes. I get some attention for the professionalism for your public safety staff. And recent events is just second to none. And so thank you, gentlemen, for doing what you do. Y'all were up all night, you know, I can see some bags starting to develop. So, thanks staff. And for the bar trim this, for the bar trim this, I've got them too, you know. So for the bar trim this weekend, I expect to see some of you at 7:30 a.m. Saturday morning with your running shoes on to meet me at the riverfront for the Healthy Weight 5K.
I mean that.
Now you can go lie for that.
At least cheer us across the finish line. Some of us will have to drag us across, so, you know. And so that's all, thank you. There's a lot happening in Palacka.
Thank you. No, sir. Let us finish the comments from the Commission. We'll get to you. Commissioner Borum.
Yes, I just wanted to notify everybody that we will be having a fundraiser for Young Life coming up November 17. Whether you're amateur, pro, just like for you to come out, help support the cause. It's a group of adolescents from ninth to the 12th grade, even up to college or whatever. It's this group of people that we're supporting in this event. I could pass along other information, but it's supported at different levels. It's at the Palacka Golf Course. It will be November 17, and Platinum is 1,000, Gold Level is 500, Silver Level 250, and a whole sponsor is 100, or you could just donate whatever. But kids are playing for, they're playing for some, $10 per child. If you want, if you have a child that you'd like to participate in the event. But that's what we have, we got information, papers on the back, back there. Be free to take one, look it over. That's all I have. Thanks.
Mr. McCaslin.
Not much to say, but just excited about the direction that the city is going in. I'm so excited to be a part of it, part of it. Want to say thanks to Logan and the staff. I know that you all have worked hard, but you make the process, made the process look extremely easy. So thanks for everything and just excited.
Vice Mayor.
I like the thing that I think the students do the bartram trail for us. They started doing something that some of us have seen done for years. They help them with tourism. And they had, I forgot how many second graders in that took a boat ride. And Mr. Carr called me and he said he had them hold up their hands to see how many have ever been in a boat. And there was only two kids that held up their hands. I think they had 20. I forgot how many.
Four hundred for a week.
I know, but a lot of them never had been on the river and never saw what was going on. And it brings a new face to us. And we're now the gem city of Florida, and we don't need to forget it, and we need the work to keep it going.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
I want to say it's kind of hard not to repeat what's already said. But I definitely want to thank the staff for the hard work that they put in. Witnessed the late night that has come with it. So I'm eternally grateful for every department and their contribution to making sure that this budget season was one that was smooth. I'm excited about the Bartram Trail and their commitment, what they've done for the Putnam County School District. As previously stated, that would have been the once in a lifetime for some of the students to get on the boat and be with their classmates while going up and down the St. John's River and being taught about bartram himself. So thank you to the Bartram Trail Committee. I look forward to being out there, not necessarily running on Saturday, but being in. Being in full support of those that are, I'll make sure that there is water for you. So we definitely want to thank that. And again, I want to say thank you to Betsy, because Betsy is always a call, email, or a text message away. I think last night, just as quick as she sent the email, I sent her one back. So I would have definitely thanked her for always being available and thanked her for the hard work that she has put in in tackling two jobs since we've, since we've been in this transitional state. So thank you very much for all the hard work that you have done.
Thank you so much. Let y'all know the City of Palacka is hiring. Check the website. We have a lot of positions out there.
I want to make sure we acknowledge the press release that was sent out today. There was, for those who don't know, there was a police-involved shooting early this morning in the City of Palacka. Official statement, the City of Palacka joins the community in mourning the death of Antoine K. Lewis, Sr. We extend our deep sympathy and condolences to the family of Mr. Lewis. We encourage prayers for the grief family, the officers involved, and the community as a whole pursuant to Florida law. The Florida Department of Law Enforcement will be conducting a thorough investigation into facts surrounding this tragic incident. Individuals with any information concerning the officer-involved shooting should contact the Florida Department of Law Enforcement immediately. These unfortunate circumstances often leave us with many questions and concerns about unknown facts. It is incumbent upon our community to galvanize and unite during times of crisis. We must diligently exercise faith and compassion for all parties affected. Resources for grief counseling and chaplain services are available upon request by contacting the City of Palacka Police Department at 386-329-0115. And I want to thank our leadership and the community as a whole for coming together. We came together in prayer. We came together as a community, and that's what we have to do during times of crisis. There are so many questions that always go unanswered. But when we can come together through faith and love, this community can conquer anything. We can do anything but fail as long as we continue to stand fast in things that we know we're supposed to do. Over and over again, we're better together, and we'll continue to be better together. On a more positive note, I want us to focus on some of the events that we have coming forward at this time. Commission will assume its own information as it relates to Cedar Loop. Cedar Loop is a project that's been coordinated through the Cedar Loop Committee and Putnam Blue Age and Trails. It's an opportunity for us again to celebrate the opening of another trailhead within the community. And the one, the trailhead is in Hastings. It's a trail connector which allows the Putnam Trails to be connected to the St. John's Trails, who will have running events that will start in St. John's County and Putnam County from the riverfront as well as cycling events that will come, that will all end up in Hastings around noon. We have a proposed event from the city side, which is kind of a spin-off from Walk with the Mayor. It's a, again, it's a healthy challenge, it's a healthy city challenge that we're putting on, which will allow us on, which will allow us to showcase our health organizations, partner with various entities throughout the community. The hospital has agreed to partner in this effort so that we can bring forward information to our citizens to allow them to be able to make healthier choices, to be more engaged in the process, and then we will create some healthy challenges that we can work on throughout the remainder of the year and throughout the coming years so that we can run with Betsy in the future. And so, those are the things that we're looking to do. That event takes place on November 17th at the Riverfront. The, the event finishes with an event which draws all of the individuals who participate back to downtown Palacka for a stroll and an evening event which allows them to be able to go in and participate with local vendors and do shopping and other activities right here in Palacka. And so, we're excited about those possibilities, something we've been thinking of for months. And we are looking forward to an opportunity to showcase this community once again, to many of our visitors, to let them see exactly what we have by way of ecotourism and what the Gem of the St. John's is. And so, I want to make sure that I recognize the ladies and gentlemen, they the Palm Coast Alumni Chapter who are here in the audience. You ladies can kind of wave your hands. We want to thank y'all for being here with us. My two little nephews who are here with me, raise your hands, guys. To thank you guys for all your efforts, we thank you for the excitement and the energy that's here, and we look forward to continually restoring the gem. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.